We will now reconvene the City Council's special meeting. Are there any final actions?
Good evening, Madam Mayor. No final action tonight.
Okay, we will now adjourn the City Council's special meeting and call to order the City Council's regular meeting for Tuesday, August 22nd. Will the Clerk please call the roll?
Council members Rohrbaugh, Aquino, Challem Chirla, Kozlowski, and Rodriguez.
Here. I'm going to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Are there any agenda updates?
No update tonight, Madam Mayor.
Okay, will the Clerk please call the next item? Your first item this evening is Business from the Floor. All right, Business from the Floor is the public's opportunity to address the City Council concerning any item that, within the City Council's jurisdiction, that is not on the agenda. Please keep in mind that the City Council is generally prohibited from discussing or taking action on any item that is not on the agenda. Public comments are limited to no more than three minutes. There's a speaker timer on the podium in front of you that displays the time you have remaining on your three minutes. We ask that everyone respect the three-minute time limit to ensure that all speakers have an equal opportunity to address the City Council. Are there any requests to speak?
Yes, you have two requests to speak tonight under Business from the Floor. Your first speaker will be Janet Plank, and Janet will be followed by Michael Harris.
Good evening, Janet.
Right there. Thank you. So, my name's Janet Plank. I live just below the rodeo grounds in that little court development. I've been there about 22 years. And I just have a question. I've been here probably not long enough to see all the changes over the last 40 years, but definitely long enough to see some of the changes. And in working with some of the departments, I would like to know what our, the city's current process and procedure is to remove homeless people in the high-fire-zone areas, the high-fire-hazard areas. That's pretty much it. Because I was recently told I need to see fire to receive assistance.
Ms. Plank, the Council can't address you back and forth during Business from the Floor, but I will direct you, if I could, to put them on the spot. Our Fire Chief, Casano, is in the back row, and he'd be happy to talk to you about our open-space policies.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, our next speaker will be Michael Harris.
Good evening, Michael.
Good evening. It is always good to be seen. Especially in these chambers, it's just, it's phenomenal, you know, coming up here when I'm about five years old, you know, marching in along Sutter Street. I guess I got hooked. George Chan and June Hoes and a few others kind of hooked me into this history, and I just fell in love, and so I'm living here. So, I come by today because we were talking, laughing, and joking about it in the back because, you know, when we were in elementary school, we would actually like fight. It's like, my turn to lead the pledge, my turn. And we had like California Admissions Day, which is September 9th every year. This year it's on Saturday, so we're gonna have cake and ice cream. One of my teachers, and some of y'all might know him, kind of like this old guy, looked like Santa Claus, always playing with trains. Did y'all know who I'm talking about? Mr. Anderson. You know, we were just hanging out the other day, and he says, "Yeah, we need a roof on the train, and we need a pay job." And, you know, he's kind of like, you know, kind of like, so... It's the first railroad in the West, you know, I mean, you know, with passenger trains. So, we need to put some energy behind that. And then, the final thing I'll say is, well, no, I'll add a little bit more. So, the Sacramento Valley Railroad went from Sacramento, right where the river is, we're behind the California Railroad Museum. There's a turnaround, just like the one here. And that's all it was. It just turned around, went here, Folsom, and turned back around, right? And unfortunately, or I should say fortunately, the money stays in Sacramento. It doesn't always come up here for a lot of reasons. But we definitely need to lift that history up. And so, I'll stay there, and I'm looking for my friend. He ain't here yet, but I'm trying to lose a little weight. Well, it's the Johnny Cash Trail. You know, we go up Lightest Door Street, and, you know, it's taken me a little while to be able to ride all the way up, you know, because like the grade gets kind of steep there. But it's like a nice place for, you know, imagining what's going to be in this spot because it's like dry grass and a sign that says, "Some art's coming here." I'm glad some of the money from downtown is coming up here, and that's a really good thing. So, yeah, I know the agenda's busy tonight, but I'm gonna leave these with you.
Thank you, Michael. Are there any other requests to speak?
You have no additional request to speak under this item.
Okay, will the Clerk please call the next item?
That takes you to our scheduled presentation calendar. We're gonna go a bit out of order and jump up to item number two. This will be to receive information from the Parks and Recreation Department regarding the Adopt a Trail program.
Good evening, I'm Chris O'Keefe, and I oversee the facilities and the park maintenance here in the city of Folsom.
Good evening, Chris.
I got you.
Got it?
Yep.
That is one good-looking trail. So, the Adopt a Trail program was started back in 2018 from all the documents that I've been able to uncover in the last few months. At its peak, we had a grand total of seven adopters. The program was suspended back in 2019, 2020-ish. This year, the city manager directed PNR staff to bring the program back, and the Parks Maintenance Division has operational oversight over the program. These are the, this is basically the purpose of the Adopt a Trail. I kind of gravitate toward the third bullet there to promote the need for good stewardship within the city's parks and trails and the vital role that the public plays in this effort. Our trails are one of the gems of this city, and we want to make sure that we do everything that we can to make sure that they are safe and remain beautiful. So, the highlights, it's a one-year commitment, approximately one mile of a trail per group or per individual. We ask that you work one day out of the month. We will put up a trail signage that will acknowledge the fact that you're out there volunteering your greatest resource, which is your time. And at the end of the year, the adopter is awarded a proclamation from those of you on the City Council. In terms of sponsorship, originally, we received, I think it was a $1,500 sponsorship from Intel, I believe, back in 2018. What we're doing now is going to be reaching out, and we're asking for $1,000 per trail section. Or you can do five years, and if you donate, $4,000. If you donate $10,000, we'll provide you with free tacos for the rest of your life. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. The sponsoring entity, again, like everybody else, will be acknowledged with signage at their trail sections. Those are the trails that we will be putting out there for adoption. Where are we at to date? We had a lot of jumbled documentation. We've been able to spend some time with that, get it condensed down to where it's actually readable and understandable. We've got information on the website. It'll be in the rec guides from here on out, and you'll see that it'll be in City News and upcoming e-newsletters. We have two groups that have already expressed interest. We had one group that actually formally adopted a trail over at, by Catlin Park. So, that's good news. They're actually going to adopt the park, too, which is kind of nice. We have the Apapa Group that is looking to do that as well. And then, I also received an email today from an individual that would like to adopt a trail as well. So, we're picking up speed. We want to be able to do it in a manner that allows us to properly support the team. So, I don't know that we need a bull rush of volunteers at this point, but if we can just bring folks on gradually, take over sections of the trail, I think that we'll put together a program that will last and will not die out in the next two or three years.
I agree.
Wrap it up. I don't know how this happened, but I'm the program director. And the individual behind the magic in terms of all of the marketing and content creation is Leslie Miller. If you haven't met Leslie, she's terrific, and we love her. Any questions?
Chris, first of all, thank you very much for this. I know my interest in the Adopt a Trail program was piqued during May as Bike Month, when I was exploring the trails. But I did read through this whole thing tonight, and I appreciate it, and I don't want to come across as critical, but I'm wondering, are we making this harder than it needs to be? Because if I just have a one-mile section of the bike trail, assuming there's not a homeless camp or something down there, it may be one bag worth of trash, right? And this requires that you submit a form to your office at least 14 days before you're gonna go out and do something. It says you gotta wear protective eyewear. I mean, it just seems like, you know, I pick up a lot of trash around this city. I kind of do it spontaneously when I have, you know, an hour to spare, or I got up early, or whatever. I just, I just wonder if this, we're making this too difficult. And an example of, when you're talking about a group, and maybe they're gonna go out and do a bigger area or something like that, I can see that. But if I'm just, you know, an individual or a family, and I just want to adopt the one little mile section by my house, do I really need to do all that stuff in order to just maintain it?
I think it's a little bit more than just picking up trash. I think what we're trying to do is foster a sense of commitment and a sense of personal attachment to all of our trails and parks. And I think that's kind of the end goal. At the end of the day, it is picking up trash. Is there a ton of trash out there on the trails? Well, that depends. The other day, somebody left a sleeper sofa off of the Hung Bug Willow Creek Trail, which we'll be picking up tomorrow. But one of the things, the city loves its documentation. So, you have the documentation there. I like to make things easy on people, so we're gonna be incredibly flexible in how we approach these things. If an individual only wants to do 3/4 of a mile, and it makes sense within a certain trail area, we'll do that. If a larger group wants to take on more than a mile, we'll certainly take a look at that. And we'll try and make it as easy and pleasurable as we can. The goal, what I would like to see is that when we go back out next year and we're hunting for folks to come out and volunteer, that we retain a lot of the folks that were in the first year's output. So, that's what I'm looking at. I'm not trying to make it more than what it is. It is picking up trash, but we want people to, again, take some pride and take some commitment, you know, on behalf of the parks and the trails out here.
So, is it your, is it data that you'll be wanting to collect as far as when people go out and do cleanup?
They can, they're only, they only have to do one day a week or a month. So, you can make that any day that you'd like to. If you want to do more than that, that's fine.
Okay.
I mean, Lemby, to be honest with you, if you wanted to do that seven days a week, you could do that. But I think one day, the group that I'm gonna be meeting with on the 3rd, they want to do the first Sunday of the month, and then take care of the park after that. So, I think that that's terrific. It's not a complete one-mile section. It works out to about .8 miles, but it's more than enough for them. It's over by Catlin Park. Not a ton of trash. I've walked that park and that trail a couple of times now. But it's more than just that. It's, you know, being with your fellow friends, your fellow coworkers, developing relationships, and again, getting that personal attachment to the park.
Well, I think once the program gets out and we advertise it, I think you're gonna get a lot more responses for people wanting to adopt a part of the trail because, I mean, basically, we live in a city that people love their trails and their parks, and, and they, I think there are people that are out there already doing cleanup, you know, with, along with Councilmember Aquino. So, it's just a great program.
I think it's a great opportunity. I was asked at a, the Parks and Rec Commission meeting, whether we had the bandwidth for it. We do. We have the interest. We'll see it through.
Good.
Chris, I just want to, you know, shout out, you know, you are very open and creative. I know you're, you engaged last six weeks, almost 25 kids plus, you know, making them involve and feel the pride, you know, giving back to the community. Thank you on that. I know, I still remember when I was a Parks Commissioner in 2016, 2018, formulating all those roles. Good to hear you are open. I think, I agree with, you know, Ms. Aquino, right? If it is too hard, then people are going to back out. So, I hear that you are open. My only one comment or question is, if you can go back to one or two slides where the list of trails you have listed? We do have a Brightview contract already in place, and I believe through the LNDL and all that, you know, 360 degrees, it is also some of these trails, part of that contract to make the cleanup activities and all those. You know, I just want to give that, you know, tip. You know, take a look at, and either we can save, you know, a few thousand dollars by amending that contract or reusing that money for something else.
We're always looking at opportunities to save a dollar.
Right? So, I just want to put that, you know, in your mind. I didn't...
We've already actually thought about that, and we'll see how this goes and see...
Yeah.
Where we end up.
Awesome. And also, you know, it's going to be quite a bit of work from the Leslie. Is that the implementation part? Is it once in a quarter, you can put a open-house kind of thing, then everyone can come, and you give information like we are all asking here? Are we going to pick every day or once a week? You know, all those questions, community will ask. Whether you can, you know, put that in our overview workshop or, you know, kind of thing, then we can encourage people, hey, attend us and learn more about it and adopt it, right?
Yeah, we're looking to be a presence at Community Service Day. We're also doing a mass emailing to about 1,500 individuals in the city that have volunteered in the past. So, we're trying to use as many tools in the toolbox that we have to reach out to people. And I think that the casual users of the trail, when they go out and they see somebody's name on a sign, you know, they might, it might spur something within them. Why does anybody do anything? It's, I was told years ago, it's a three-legged stool. So, the first thing is money. Okay, there's no money here. Strike one. The second thing is doing something that's gratifying or meaningful. I think we can say that taking care of your parks and your trails is gratifying and meaningful. And then, the third thing is recognition. So, I think, you know, as long as we follow through with the proclamations at the end of the term by the City Council, maybe we can open up the community center and do something nice for the folks that volunteer on a yearly basis, those type of things, then I think we'll start to build that interest in the program and move it forward.
Thank you. I'm so happy to see this, and, you know, I'm looking forward for more creativity.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Rosario.
Oh, yes.
So, I also agree that this feels a little bit daunting, this handbook. But the good news is that Community Service Day is a gateway into volunteering in this way, and people can sign up on that day without completely adopting a trail and get the hang of it. And there's probably not anybody who's gonna stop you from doing vigilante trash pickups.
I get that, but I'm just saying, like, I would adopt a section of trail, but when I read this and see that I have to submit something 14 days before I go out, then I'm kind of like, nope, I'm out. I'll just do it on my own time. I don't need the sign with my name on it. That, that's the reaction that I get.
Sarah, you'll be encouraged to know that the previous packet was double the thickness of it.
And your name is already on the trail.
Get it down to the one page we use for Community Service Day, releasing liability.
All right, any other questions for Chris?
No, I'm good. Thank you.
Thank you, Chris.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we're now gonna move to the first scheduled presentation item, which is a presentation from Assemblyman Josh Hoover of grant funds for the Johnny Cash Trail Art Project.
Hello, everybody.
Good evening, Josh.
Big check, big check.
Assemblyman Hoover.
All right. Where are you at? Right here?
Oh, right, sorry, right here.
Over here, sorry. How is everyone?
Great.
So, I'm excited to be here presenting good news. You know, Sacramento, it's not always good news. We usually are just telling you guys what to do. So, I'm very excited to be here and on the theme of improving our trails. I was really thankful to work with our Parks and Recreation Department here in Folsom on putting a request in to ask for some state funding for our Johnny Cash Trail Art Experience. And so, I just wanted to formally let you guys know that the state did approve this $425,000 check. I wouldn't cash this one, just a thought. And I am, I'm just super excited to present that to you tonight and just excited to see all the work that's done. It's specifically for Cash Pick Number Two, and I'm excited to see when it's all said and done, that amazing art experience on the Johnny Cash Trail.
That's awesome. Great job. So, at $425,000, can we take a photo with Josh? All of us, all right.
Absolutely.
And could I ask Tom Hillman to come down and join the photo as well?
Tom did so much amazing work on this with me in my office, and I'm just really excited that it worked out. All right. You, too. You, too. All right, does the mayor do this?
Yep.
All right, will the Clerk please call the next item?
Your next item this evening is scheduled presentation item number three. This is a presentation from Sacramento Ronald McDonald House Charities regarding their September 9, 2023 Red Shoe Crawl fundraising event in historic Folsom.
Good evening.
Good evening. That was a hard act of follow-up. Sorry, I don't have a big check. I'm Stacy Hodge. I'm with Ronald McDonald House Charities, Northern California. Thank you for allowing me to come and talk about our event tonight. For those of you who don't know what a Ronald McDonald House is, what we do, we're in Sacramento. We provide temporary housing if a family comes to Sacramento and they need a place to stay because their child needs critical medical care. We serve all the hospitals in Sacramento, and the average length of stay is about 10 nights. We're housing 39 families a night, and we're full almost every single night. We don't charge, so we do ask for a $20 donation per night. Most of our families can't even afford a portion of that $20, and that's okay. So, we do a lot of fundraising. McDonald's started the first Ronald McDonald House in 1974. We bear their name, but they don't provide all of our financial support. So, you'll see donation boxes in McDonald's restaurants, and we get the proceeds from those boxes, but it's a very small percentage of our operating budget. So, we do a lot of fundraising. So, our next big fundraiser is in Folsom. It's on Sutter Street. On Saturday, September 9th, it's Red Shoe Crawl. We have folks coming out and wearing red shoes and going from business to business. We'll have food and drinks, entertainment, family-friendly activities. And this is an event that we've done in Sacramento for many years and had to take a break during the pandemic. So, we're bringing it back, and we're really excited to bring it to Folsom. And again, it's Saturday, September 9th. Tickets are $65, and we're expecting about 500 people. So, thank you for letting us do that in Folsom. We appreciate it.
Thank you, Stacy. How are ticket sales going?
Pretty good.
Good.
We're not sold out yet, but we're getting there.
All right. Well, they usually do sell out, those events.
Yeah. So, thank you.
We'll see you then.
Okay.
Thank you.
Should have a Big Mac hors d'oeuvre contest for all the local chefs. Their version of a small Big Mac. A little Mac.
All right, will the Clerk please call the next item?
Yeah, that takes us to the consent calendar.
All right, are there any items we want to pull?
I want to pull item 12.
Any other items?
I will move approval of items four through 13, except for number 12.
A second.
All right, will the Clerk please call the roll?
Councilmembers Rohrbaugh... Yes. Aquino...
Yes.
Challem Chirla...
Yes.
Kozlowski...
Yes.
And Rodriguez...
Yes.
Okay, item 12 is Resolution Number 11095. This is a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute a construction agreement with Central Valley Engineering and Asphalt Inc. for the Traders Lane Parking Lot Improvement Project and Appropriation of Funds.
Yeah, we talked about this during the agenda review. I just want you to explain, it's Pam, Pamela, about, you're taking out those beautiful trees. I know our residents or our business owners are probably gonna be a little upset about that. So, you can, can you inform us on the process? So, we can inform them?
Yeah, and I'm gonna ask urban forester Amy Nunes to come up and chat with us, if that's all right.
Good evening, members of the Council. Councilmember Rohrbaugh, my name is Amy Nunes. I am your urban forester. And to address your question, yes, there are 12 trees on the project site, six interior to the parking lot, and then six also along the street. All 12 are fruitless mulberries. They were planted in the 1970s. So, that puts them at about 50 years old. The decision to remove these trees as part of this project was not rash. It was made with very careful consideration. First off, although I agree from a layperson's standpoint, they do appear healthy. They have lush canopies. However, almost all of them are riddled with structural defects, decay, previous limb failures, just from enduring the last five decades of living life as a parking lot tree. One tree, for example, has a decay channel so significant, a large part of the trunk is actually disintegrated. The largest tree along the street is suffering from decay from a previous limb failure, which is starting to structurally compromise the parent branch that overhangs the street. There's even a tree that has a crack in the trunk so significant, you can see daylight through it. So, although the trees appear healthy from a foliar, a foliar surface standpoint, there's actually a lot more going on with the health of these trees when you look a little bit more critically at the woody parts of the tree. Secondly, so these trees were planted 50 years ago. The expected life expect, the average life expectancy of a fruitless mulberry planted in an urban setting is 25 years. So, we have been fortunate enough to benefit from the shade and the beauty that these trees have contributed to the historic district for twofold the times that we had any right to expect from these trees. But they are in their sunset years, and if we're going to be responsible urban foresters, we need to be planning for the future, the future generations. And then, thirdly, right now, there is no existing irrigation system in this parking lot. In 1970, when these trees were planted, it wasn't paved. The paving came in after the trees were already established. And so, when these trees ultimately succumb to their age and their injuries, we have no feasible means to replace these trees to ensure canopy for the next generation. So, with that said, this is kind of a now or never situation with this project, and this is actually a really timely opportunity to ensure that we have a vibrant canopy for the next generation and the next generation after that. So, that's why these trees are proposed for removal, because if we don't do it now, it will never happen.
So, you're putting in new trees with irrigation?
Absolutely, yes.
That's what I wanted to be, make sure was said.
Yes, so this project will remove the existing trees that have given us all the benefits they've given us for the last 50 years. We will install an irrigation system, and we're actually replacing more trees than what are currently there. And they're going to be climate-appropriate. They're going to have fall color. Yeah, and contribute to the vibrance of historic Folsom.
Well, thank you for taking the time to explain that.
Amy, how soon are they coming down?
The removal of the trees is probably going to be the very first thing that happens.
Yeah, okay.
I don't know, maybe Shane or Vaughn can kind of talk to, like, the chronology of how this project is gonna go down. But they will be replaced, and Shane and I actually had a conversation earlier today, and the replacements are scheduled to come about in about mid-November-ish.
Yeah, I was more concerned about them coming down because if they fall on somebody or, or another storm comes in and it's wet, we don't want to see these trees topple over.
The project kicks off in September, so it's coming right up.
Yeah, it'll be very quick.
Thank you, Amy.
Is there useful lumber that can be derived from these for other park projects? I don't know if mulberries would hold up.
I don't know about their applicability to, you know, furniture or anything like that. I can't speak to that. But wood chip mulch is always a valuable resource. So, you know, they, they can live on in the afterlife, know, they, they can live on in the afterlife, contributing to maybe being mulch for future trees.
You're making this more dramatic than my question.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll make a motion to approve item 12, resolution number 11095.
I second that.
All right, will the clerk please call the roll?
Council members Rorba?
Yes.
Aquino?
Yes.
Chalim Cherla?
Yes.
Kozlowski?
Yes.
And Rodriguez?
Yes.
Okay, that takes us to our first public hearing of the night. This will be item number 14, resolution number 11094. This is a resolution amending resolution number 10418 and adopting an updated fee schedule for the ambulance cost recovery program provided by the fire department.
Good evening, Ken.
Good evening, Mayor Rodriguez, council members. I'm Ken Casano, the fire chief. Just give me a second to get this other one off and mine up. Thank you. Okay. So tonight is a presentation on updating the fee schedule for the ambulance cost recovery program provided by the fire department. The Folsom Fire Department provides 24-hour emergency medical response and ground ambulance transportation for the Folsom community and its visitors. We also provide automatic and mutual aid to neighboring agencies in Sacramento, El Dorado, and Placer Counties when requested. The fire department operates three ground ambulances daily that respond to fires, rescues, emergency medical incidents, and then the personnel on those medic units are all hazard strain. The city, the ambulance program is supported by the general fund and offset by service fees collected for ambulance transportation to area hospitals. The ambulance service fee schedule period, is periodically reviewed to ensure it reflects the costs of providing these services and, and we compare it to the other jurisdictions fees. The ambulance service fee schedule was last updated April 14th, 2020. That was resolution 10418. This update only changed the assessment at seeing no transport or our first responder fee. The actual update to most of the items that we will be updating tonight was June 11th, 2019, and that was resolution 10282. So the Folsom Municipal Code 3.25.020, service charges, the fees for emergency ground, ambulance transportation services shall be established by a resolution of the city council. During fiscal year 2223, a total of 6,428 invoices were processed for ambulance transportation, and this graph depicts, depicts the percentage breakdown of where those invoices were billed. Won't read them all out. So this slide represents the invoiced recovery rate for each entity billed. As you can see, private insurance is where the vast majority of the ambulance revenue comes from. The city of Folsom has one of the highest recovery rates in the region for ambulance billing, which is a good thing. So ambulance transports by fiscal year have been statistically climbing, with the exception to what I like to call the Big Dipper. That's what that looks like in the middle there. That was fiscal years 2019, 2020, and 2021, which were from the effects of COVID. Additionally, fiscal year 2223 wasn't as sharp as a climb, only because one of our ambulances was browned out the majority of that year, closed because of staffing shortages. So the fire department's ambulance program is vulnerable to inflation and higher costs like everyone else is affected. As you can clearly see, the incredible sharp cost increases to our budget depicted on the graph. There's fuel, EMS supplies, vehicle maintenance, and then the firefighter salaries have all dramatically escalated over the year. This is an analysis and cost comparison of the regional transporting fire agencies and neighboring county transporting agencies. Along the top row are the billable charges that are invoiced for ambulance transportation and service. Folsom Fire Department ambulance charges are well below in every category, including the base rate. We are, where we are approximately 20.46% below the median. So the fire department recommends that the council pass and adopt resolution 11094, an updated fee schedule for the ambulance cost recovery program provided by the fire department effective October 2nd, 2023. The increased generated revenue will augment the general fund budget for ambulance transporting program costs, including management and overhead, the 18 firefighters that are used to staff those positions, medical supplies, equipment, fuel, vehicle maintenance, and vehicle replacement. And I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, chief. Any questions? All right, are there any? All right, we will now open the public hearing.
You have no request to speak on this item.
All right, so we will now close the public hearing. Any other comments or questions for chief? No?
Are there, are there electric ambulances on the horizon?
I'm sure there are. I haven't seen any yet, but I don't know. I don't know if I would put my faith in an electric ambulance that's trying to get you to a hospital that might all of a sudden just stop.
That can happen with any vehicle.
That's true.
Be a believer.
I haven't seen one yet, though. Thank you.
I'll move adoption of the item.
Okay, turn to second.
Yep, second.
All right, will the clerk please call the roll?
Okay, council members Rorba?
Yes.
Aquino?
Yes.
Chalim Cherla?
Yes.
Kozlowski?
Yes.
And Rodriguez?
Yes.
Okay, your second public hearing item this evening is item number 15, resolution number 11096, a resolution adopting the August 2023 adjustment for the Folsom Plan Area Specific Plan Infrastructure Fees, fondly known as SPIF, and setting the updated amount of the SPIF fees.
Good evening, Stacy.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members. Stacy Tumani, Chief Financial Officer. The item before you tonight is resolution number 11096, a resolution adopting the August 2023 adjustment for the Folsom Plan Area Specific Plan Infrastructure Fees and setting the updated amount of those fees. The SPIF program is the mechanism to equalize the costs of the infrastructure, the public lands, and the community park land in the Folsom Plan Area, and that is spread among all of the developers there. This includes roadways, sewer facilities, potable water facilities, recycled water, storm drain, habitat mitigation, and other costs. For background on this item, the city council established this fee in 2015. We've had a couple of NEXUS study updates over the years, in 2018 and in 2020, and a few changes to this program as well, to add some set-aside fees. That was in 2019 and also in 20. And in addition to these adjustments, there have been periodic and automatic CCI updates. That's the Construction Cost Index, and the most recent update was on July 1st, 2023. The 2023 SPIF adjustment was done at the request of the SPIF administrator, the city and the landowners in that area, in order to update the construction cost estimates that are used to calculate the current fees. This 2023 adjustment alters the fee amounts based on updated construction costs and the amount of development that remains in the Folsom Plan Area. The updated cost elements are in addition to the CCI, the Construction Cost Index, update that occurred on July 1st. And so this will ensure that the fees are reflective of the cost of the backbone infrastructure that has yet to be constructed. And the adjusted SPIF fees, if approved, will become effective on October 23rd, 2023. Here you have a chart of the cost increase for residential units. This does not include the Folsom Heights area. They have their own fees for this. But for all the other ones, the increase here will be approximately $1,800 to $4,400 per unit for residential uses, depending on the type. And the increase for non-residential uses will be between $1.44 and $1.98 per building square foot for all of the, the non-residential. And so with that, staff recommends that the city council conduct the public hearing and then adopt this resolution 11096.
All right, are there any questions for Stacy? No, okay. We will now open the public hearing. Are there any public comments?
You have no request to speak on this item.
All right, we'll now close the public hearing. And would anybody like to make a?
I can move adoption of resolution number 11096.
I second that.
Okay, will the clerk please call the roll?
Council members Rorba?
Yes.
Aquino?
Yes.
Chalim Cherla?
Yes.
Kozlowski?
Yes.
And Rodriguez?
Yes.
Will the clerk please call the next item?
Yeah, your next item is Old Business, item number 16, resolution number 11090. This is a resolution authorizing the formation of the Central Business District Master Plan Citizens Advisory Committee.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the city council. Pam Johns, Community Development Director, and I'm gonna introduce Kathy Peace, who is our project manager consultant that is overseeing this master planning effort, and she's gonna give the presentation on the committee recommendation.
Thank you, Pam. Good evening, Mayor and members of the city council. This item before you is related to the Central Business District Master Plan. Let's see.
Hang on, I'll get you.
Thank you. So the district is roughly from the middle school to the south and will include Lemby Park and all the way, including both Bidwell and Riley. In January of this year, the city council provided direction to move forward with the master plan process and provided direction that we utilize the Citizens Advisory Committee as part of that process.
I'm sorry, did you say that Lemby would be included?
We are going to amend that.
Oh, okay, you just, okay, got it.
Yeah, sorry. So the purpose of the committee will be to provide information and provide input to help inform the master plan. Some of the main priorities will include transportation improvements, wayfinding, placemaking, and branding, utilities, lighting and landscaping, and economic development improvements. The committee is expected to be a one-year process. And with the goals of the master plan, we were looking for members that include landowners' business, residents at large, transportation, recreation, arts, cultural, and tourism, economic development, and landowners or developers, education and students, and housing and service providers. So a lot of information has already been provided in the past, and a lot of these people have already been involved in processes. Last fall, there was an Urban Land Institute Week Study of the area. They compiled stakeholders, so we reached out to folks on that list. We also had a newsletter that went out citywide, and I was contacted from folks that had interest in, in this advisory committee. And we also worked with staff if there were areas that we thought needed a couple more expertise, and so individual staff also reached out to folks. So this table shows you folks that we've reached out to or have reached out to me and indicated an interest in volunteering in this process. I did want to point out, as part of your consent calendar, we are also hiring Jacobs Engineering to prepare the master plan, and they have a consultant that is dedicated to public outreach. And I wanted to let you know, we are going to have quite a lot of opportunities in addition to the advisory committee, and a couple of those are including, Jacobs will draft an engagement and awareness plan that's gonna highlight their outreach efforts and what they're gonna do to make sure that we communicate it to the community. We will maintain a stakeholder database to get information out. We will update the city's website with information as it becomes available. The consultant is going to do a field visit to informally interview the community within the Central Business District, and then they are going to use what are called pop-up engagement tools. They're gonna go out to things like farmer's market and try and reach out to folks that don't typically have an opportunity to participate, to get them, to inform them on what they're doing, what we are doing, and to also get their feedback. And then finally, we're gonna do a community-wide design charrette. So with that, I would like to ask that the council approve resolution number 11090 to form the advisory committee.
Thank you, Kathy. Any questions for Kathy?
Just have a couple of comments, if that's okay. Can you go back to the slide that has the names on it, Kathy? So I was really pleased when I saw these names. It seems like it's a really varied group of people. There's some folks on there that we've never seen before. Also, really a lot of youth on there, which I think is, is really good. The one name that, that I didn't see on there that I mentioned to Pam was Dan Dreher of Folsom Lake Bull. Apparently, Kathy tried to reach out to him. He didn't get the messages. I don't know what happened, but anyway, I contacted him and Pam did also, and he is interested in being on there and would like to name his brother Jeremy as the alternate. So once we get to approval of this, if you guys agree, I think we could add them as that first thing on the left, top left, the landowner/business owner in the district.
Sounds good.
Yeah, but Kathy, these meetings are open for public, and you are not, I think that's what you are explaining, right? You know?
Yes, there'll be public meetings, so the public would also be able to attend, but these are the, these would be the official members of the committee.
Got it. Anybody can voice and they can give their inputs based on their experience. No, I'm okay with what you are saying. In addition, you know, how we are going to be, you know, bringing the brightness, you know, the thoughtful minds together to make that central district's more vibrant. So, okay. When we say it, that's how we are going to say it. When the day is there, you know, you can walk in, you can, you can speak. You don't have to, you know, shy away from your great thoughts.
Exactly.
Thank you, Kathy.
Okay, do we, um, thank you, Kathy. Do we have any requests to speak?
Yeah, you have one request to speak on this item from Bob Holderness. Good evening, Bob.
Good evening, Mayor and members. I just rise to congratulate you on awarding the, oops, this one, sorry. Mayor and members, Robert G. Holderness, Folsom resident, just rise to congratulate you on approving resolution number 10, to hire a consultant to do the Central Business District, important part of our city revitalization program, and I applaud you for doing that. And I think that you've got a great committee, and I would also endorse Sarah Aquino's recommendation regarding Dan Dreher, but I do have one observation. I think Monica Dreher would be much easier to work with than Dan or, or his brother Jeremy, but that's just a personal thing. So that's all I got. Thank you.
Thank you, Bob. All right, any other comments or questions for Kathy?
Nope, good job.
I can move adoption of?
Okay, so now we'll now close.
No, it's not a public hearing.
Can I, before you make that motion?
Yeah.
Can I just suggest, nice coincidence, excuse me, nice coincidence, within the last three weeks, there was an episode of the podcast Freakonomics Radio that was all about roundabouts. And it will give you a nice, clear description of the difference between a roundabout and a rotary. And as we look at this area, it is well-suited to slowing traffic down, narrowing roads, if we were to introduce some roundabouts. Thank you.
So I'm gonna move adoption of resolution number 11090 with the addition of Dan Dreher, or a representative of the Dreher family, it really doesn't matter, as a business owner in the district, and then his brother or his sister as the alternate.
Second.
All right, will the clerk please call the roll?
Council member Rorba?
Yes.
Aquino?
Yes.
Chalim Cherla?
Yes.
Kozlowski?
Yes.
And Rodriguez?
Yes.
All right, your second Old Business item this evening is item number 17, resolution number 11089. This is a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute an agreement with Water Systems Consulting, Inc. for the city of Folsom Water Vision and Appropriation of Funds.
Thank you, Krista. Mayor Rodriguez, members of the council, Marcus Yasutaki, Environmental and Water Resources Director. I'll make it fairly quick. I do not have a presentation for you this evening. If you have any questions related to the staff report or the resolution, I'd be happy to answer them. But I believe the process we went through is outlined pretty clearly in the staff report, but if you have any specific questions about the process or what we did, I am here to answer those questions.
Thank you, Marcus. Any questions for Marcus? No?
Do you expect a large change to our vision for water?
I do not expect a large change, but I believe- but I believe there are probably some ideas that we can refine and hone in on to provide maybe better direction to us and then opportunities for council to deliberate in the future.
Okay, thank you.
All right, are there any requests to speak?
You do have one request to speak on this item from Carly Kood. I'm sorry if I mispronounced that.
Hi, I'm Carly Kood. I'm a resident of District 2. I actually misnumbered my request to speak. I wanted to speak on number 16. Is it too late for that since the adoption or the resolution was adopted? I just wanted to say that I did not know that Lemby Park was going to be remapped into that advisory committee, and I think that that's really important to know. I actually came today to talk specifically or hear about if Lemby Park was going to be discussed. The conditions in Lemby Park are really deteriorating. It's been a really precipitous decline in our ability to have, to use the public rights of way, to have safe play and commuting pedestrian traffic for children and families. And I really think that if Lemby Park is going to be included in the remapping, the citizens should know about that. My neighbors and myself really talk all the time about, okay, let's make sure that our kids are safe and they're coming home before dark because of the growing number of encampments there. And paraphernalia, even just recently, if you look on C Click Fix, you'll see it took over a month for a very egregious public obstruction, blocking of a sidewalk off of where Glenn meets behind Walgreens to be actually removed. Only today, after a month, is it gone. The person and their belongings. And it really was very upsetting conditions for lots of us, including myself. I called Folsom PD multiple times when the gentleman was nude in front of me and my children. Anyway, so I would hope there is a way to get involved in that citizens advisory committee and make it more known to the public that Lemby Park is actually going to be part of that revitalization plan because we really do need a plan for making that park, which is one of our jewels in the city, more safe.
And it sounds like just, it sounds like it will be included in to the.
Yes, so that probably would have been helpful to know. And also on the Folsom City website, that citizens advisory committee was never advertised as one of the committees that people could request to participate in. I remember when the newsletter came out announcing the formation of that committee, but it really was like, this committee will be formed, stay tuned. There was never a call for interest for residents. So I would like to see more invite to participate.
Their meetings will be public, and you should join them.
Thank you.
Yeah.
And just as FYI, public nudity is a crime.
That's right.
So that is a, that is definitely a call to the police 911, and they will address that.
And my neighbors and I called multiple times, and you can see it on C Click Fix, a long list of it being reported, photos of the gentleman, and he was there for over a month.
Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. I just want to say, I think that's important. You made a lot of good points that we can follow up with staff about.
All right, so any other questions or comments on resolution 11089?
Do we make a motion here?
No, I want to just give feedback to, I don't have a question, Marcus. You don't have to get up. You can. Just thank you. You did a really good job explaining, you know, the balance in here. Obviously, the one we chose was more expensive, but a better investment, how you explained it. You called the references. So thank you for thoroughly explaining that at our agenda reviews.
I'll move adoption of resolution number 11089.
I second that.
All right, will the clerk please call the roll?
Council member Rorba,
Yes.
Aquino,
Yes.
Chalim Chirla,
Yes.
Kozlowski,
Yes.
and Rodriguez.
Yes. Will the clerk please call the next item?
Yeah, that takes you to our last item of the evening. This is new business item number 18. This is resolution number 11093, a resolution of the City Council authorizing the mayor to execute an amendment to the employment agreement for the city manager.
Thank you, Krista. Good evening, Madam Mayor and Members of the City Council, Stephen Wong, City Attorney. The City Council evaluates the job performance of city manager every year, and this year, the evaluation was conducted on June 13th, 27th, and July 11th. The council has traditionally adjusted the city manager's salary following performance evaluation. So this item is agendas for the council to discuss, see the manager compensation in open session, and make adjustments as appropriate. That's all I have. The rest is up to you. Happy to answer any questions you may have.
No, okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, any comment?
So I'm going to just make a motion now to get the discussion started. Based on our discussion in closed sessions and the contracts that have been passed for our employees the past handful of years and the comments from our city staff and majority of this council, I believe that it would be fair and equitable to offer a COLA adjustment of 3%, not 10%. It has been said many times from this council, finance director and city manager herself, that we can't afford to pay more. The salary of our city manager position is in alignment with other agencies. We do not have a retention or hiring issue to contend with. If we gave 10%, including benefits, it would be close to $40,000 raise a year. I believe this is out of alignment with what has been consistently presented in contract negotiations and budget presentations. So in light of all the evidence presented by the city and supported by the majority of this council in the past, I believe it would be fiscally irresponsible to accept the 10% increase in pay that would raise the salary and benefits close to $40,000 every year. I make a motion to move resolution 11093 with the exception of replacing the 10% proposed raise to a 3% adjustment matching mini COLA increases.
I second on that motion.
Okay, will the clerk please call the roll?
Council member Rorba.
Now we should be discussing it. There's a second, and then we discuss it. Unless no one has any discussion.
Only if everybody wants to discuss it.
True.
So I would just point out that two out of the past four years, the city manager declined a salary increase. So actually, I think this is very in line with what our bargaining units have received, which is about 3%, 3 to 3.5% every year.
And on a compounding basis, it's actually less than the rest of the bargaining units have gotten.
So just some, I think some of the reasons why 10% seemed appropriate. So in, as mentioned, in 2020 and 2022, when all the other departments got raises, Ms. Anderson declined her raise. Currently, right now, there is a 9% difference between our city manager and the highest-paid executive management team member. So 9% with the responsibility of the entire city, there's just a 9% difference there. The current ranking of the region for the, for number six, oh, she currently is ranked number six for the seven city managers that we looked at. With a 10% increase, it'll put her at number four, right behind Sac City, Sat County, and Roseville. And when you look at the person who was currently number four, Ms. Anderson has higher years of service than the current, than that comparison, who is a male. When I look at ranking throughout the county, I look at male, female. Women are still making 82 cents to the dollar for every man. So by bringing Ms. Anderson up to the level where she would have been had she taken the increases back in 2020 and 2022, she would be much more aligned, appropriate to where she would have been. Currently, among the rankings, women city managers right now are 2, 4, and 7. This, sorry, right now is 2, 6, and 7. This would put the female city managers in comparison to their male counterparts at 2, 4, and 7. So a 10%, if you look at 3.5, 3.5, and 3.5 from this year, that is 10.5. A 10% increase is very fair to put her back at a level where she would have been had she taken those raises back in those two years. So for those reasons, it is very justifiable that Ms. Anderson's pay be raised 10% accordingly to what she would have been paid.
If I can make a comment, this is obviously a little awkward for me because it's about my employment agreement. I wanted to make clear to everyone that I didn't ask for any raise. So, you know, I appreciate all of this conversation. Also, I wanted to make the point that I am in the middle of my evaluation process with my department heads, who will all receive raises. So that 10% differential will actually be even less. Yeah, I just wanted to make that point, that that's actually not current information.
Let's call the question.
My only point I want to make here to support the 3% instead of 10%. First and foremost, I want to sincerely acknowledge and appreciate when city manager declined the increments when the whole world is in a big pandemic in 2020. And she's so nice to see how the public is suffering. The small business owners, they are out of business. So I want to thank on that one. The only one point I want to make, me being the 27 years in public service, she declined the raise. She did not defer the raise to the future date. I just want to make those points. And if somebody lost their business or they, they didn't make any money in small business, are they increasing the price in an exponential way? I'm talking in general public, probably not. So I just want to make that she's so kind enough to decline that, but not deferred, to accumulate that numbers. And my other point is also, this is always a thing for me. Public service, state, federal, county, cities. I'm just going to read some numbers here. Secretary for Government Operations for the State of California. She manages 13 big departments, including franchise tax board. Her salary is 225K. California Health and Human Services Agency, we call DHCS. They manage $105 billion medical payments. That's secretary. Her pay is 231K. So when I see this public service, something, even I was talking this on my county-level boards, it's something quite not matching in my mind. I just want to make that comment in any non-negative way. I'm just making that comment because cities and counties, their salaries are.
Are those salaries or are those benefit packages?
Salary only.
So.
No, I just want to, you know, give those facts. I just want, you know, put those on the declined and the deferred. I just want to make that clarity as well. So if it is not deferred and declined, let's give the regular raise of between 3 and 3.5%.
Vice Mayor Chalim Chirla, I did want to make clear, you are absolutely correct. I declined raises twice, and it was with no expectation. That wasn't a loaded decline. I wasn't saying you owe it to me later. So, you know, I do appreciate you pointing that out.
So anything above an average COLA increase, cost of living. Adjustment. Would be based on merit. So, you know, that makes me quite, you know, if you want to do 10%, then what has the city manager done over and above her expectations?
So COLA is not based on merit?
Correct. Anything over an average amount of 3%, up to 10% would be a merit.
When you look at the comparison, the comparison of where our city manager is in comparison to the region, and then when you look at where her pay is in comparison to her highest-paid executive management team, there is a huge difference. Council member Rorba, have you ever managed people?
I'm not going to engage in a dialogue.
Okay, so then, if you will understand, if your salary is close to your employees, close to your highest-paid employee, that could be very demoralizing. Yes, she declined the raise in 2020. Yes, she declined it in 2022. But when you look at the overall comparison to where it is, and we as women leaders to allow that the continuous pay gap between men and women to be at 80, continue to stay at 82 cents for every dollar, it would not be right for us to allow that to continue to happen in our own city. It just doesn't seem fair. It doesn't seem right. It is appropriate to bring Ms. Anderson's pay to a level where she would have been had she taken it. And it is, and now is a timing, I think it's a good timing now to put her at a level where she would have been had she taken the raise in those two years.
I just want to address Council member Rorba's question because you weren't here for this, so you may not know. But first of all, the city manager has been the city manager for arguably the most difficult time in probably the past, I don't know, 50, 60, 80, 100 years, right? To be a city manager with COVID. You know, almost half of her tenure was, you know, during the COVID era. And one of the things that's always been a particular point of pride for me with the city of Folsom, and I give the city manager full credit for this. We are the only local government within the county that never closed our city hall during the pandemic. Somebody could always come here. They could pay their utility bill. They could go to the Community Development Department to get a permit for, you know, a construction project or whatever. Anything that you come to city hall to do, they could do that. You cannot say the same thing about any other city in this county or the county of Sacramento. As a matter of fact, somebody who's very involved in the land use business told me, this person needed to send an, get a document to somebody at the county of Sacramento and was told, well, it was too big to email. And so the person said, well, you can send it to the county administrative office, but I won't get it for a couple of months because we're closed. So I, for the reasons I stated earlier, because I think she declined it and, you know, I think this is fair. And I think she has gone above and beyond. So could we call the question and vote on this motion?
Sure. Will the clerk please call the roll?
And just to be clear, this is the vote on a COLA at 3% instead of 10 was the motion and the second.
Correct.
So calling the roll on Rorba.
Yes.
Aquino.
No.
Chalim Chirla.
Yes.
Kozlowski.
No.
and Rodriguez.
No.
So the motion fails.
So I'm going to move to adopt resolution number 11093 as is.
Second.
Okay, will the clerk please call the roll?
Council member Rorba.
No.
Aquino.
Yes.
Chalim Chirla.
No.
Kozlowski.
Yes.
and Rodriguez.
Yes.
The motion passes.
All right, will the clerk please call the next item?
The next item is council request for future agenda items.
I do have one. So in the last meeting we had, we talked about, you know, creating a community advisory committee. We know we have some pretty serious shortfalls coming within 10 months. We're going to start looking at a budget that is, has projected financial shortfalls. So maybe one of the, either the next meeting or the one in late September, can we look at our options? And so we can start planning for this budget deficit. I know that there are probably options that we have out there, but when we look at our strategic plan, you know, if we're going to expand the police department, we need money. If we're going to hire more cops to, so that their staffing is accordingly, that costs money. The Johnny Cash trail, that costs money. You know, IT infrastructure, that costs money. So can we start looking, can we start have a conversation that talks about what the plan is for sometime later, you know, within the next 10 months?
We would be happy to bring back an item. Maybe just a suggestion that there's a lot to unpack there. And maybe we, you know, just a suggestion, and this is actually something I spoke about with Council member Aquino, is maybe we take some small bites with the city council over a period of time, beginning in the fall, to do, I hate using the term over and over, the deep dive, you know, but to really get into details on the various elements of the budget since we are facing this structural deficit. And it could be, for example, that we start with a study session, you know, as Council member Rorba has suggested before, that we start with just our general fund reserve level and what that stands at and why, and what the details are behind it. Or, you know, just kind of taking small bites at budget conversations would be a possibility.
So just, I mean, maybe I'm getting the angst of that conversation should probably happen sooner than later. And I think your recommendation is, like, what time period would you say?
Well, we're going to, I mean, inherently, we're going to need a lot of time on this budget. And as your city manager, I've added more budget hearings than were ever previously held. And we start much earlier than we ever did before. So in the new year, right away, we'd be, start building already for your May adoption. So, you know, we'd probably, January, we'd be having very serious conversations about what this budget looks like. But I was suggesting that we could back up from there and, you know, maybe the, you know, first October meeting, that we have an initial conversation and spend the latter part of 2023 doing some, some study sessions that are just for the council to get comfortable with different elements of the budget in preparation for those big decisions. So just a suggestion.
Yeah, I could do, October sounds good. I just think we need to look at, what are our options? Are we, you know, is, I know people have thrown out, you know, potential tax, or do we do a special tax? A special tax that solely focus on, you know, public safety? we do a special tax, a special tax that solely focus on, you know, public safety, IT infrastructure, economic development, we decide, or, or are we going to plan on cuts? Like, I think that's a conversation that I think, but October sounds good. I can do that during that time.
Does anyone want to?
Madam Mayor, my suggestion to the city manager was that, because yes, I agree, I think we ought to continue the discussion about the city's finances and that. My suggestion was that we kind of bring one thing to focus on to maybe each meeting for the rest of the year, and we just kind of do it in bite-sized pieces. And so, you know, maybe one is, is looking at our reserves, and one is a suggestion that I had, because this is something that I don't think that I've had this discussion in public during our, my time on the council, is what sort of revenue sharing agreements exist right now, you know, with the county of Sacramento or whomever? I'm assuming there are some for South of 50, but I don't know, but that would be something that would be good to know, I think. And so if we could just kind of, you know, just a little something that just, you know, we're not here for hours on end, but just something that we just do bite-sized thing, and we just, maybe we spend 20, 30 minutes at each council member doing something, learning about the finances.
I like your idea, Councilmember Aquino, and you and I had talked about the financial policies, so I would want to add that as probably one of the first steps is what are our financial policies and where do we need to adjust or add or, so.
Sounds good.
Okay.
Any other topics?
So now, is Elaine is going to prepare the list and give us, and we go and pick one at a time, and is that what?
I'll work with the CFO and, you know, we have expressed, we have some staffing challenges going on in our finance department, so I don't want to overwhelm the CFO or her staff. We will do our best to bring you helpful information because this is very, very critical.
Critical, okay. Yeah, I know, last time in our closed door also, we discussed, even publicly also, the financial guidelines for department heads on procurements is not clearly defined, it's very vague. It's not helping the Elaine or the executive management team, and also the public-private partnership clearly defining and going after the private to invest in city activities. There's another thing also. I'm open on taking one at a time, but we love to see those items as well.
So I have, I'm sorry, are you done?
Oh, yeah, I'm done.
So I have a potential agenda item. I would like to do a homeless discussion, have our PD report on the reality of the situation, how it's affecting, Elaine and I talked yesterday about how it's affecting all departments, options that our residents, business owners, and council members, and even our police officers have, laws and ordinances from the state, maybe that are holding some things back. So what can residents do? Give them a chance, hopefully not, you know, be too negative, but give them a chance to have some place to give their feedback and their concerns. And so her and I had talked a little bit more in detail about what I want to see, but just really have a good discussion of where the reality of it is that we are at and where we want to go and how we want to accomplish some tasks.
So in my conversation with our city manager yesterday, you know, I come from a strong belief that you cannot manage what you don't measure. So I asked for some, like, some form of key performance indicator, some part of data that can sort of let us know what's happening, when things are, when things are increasing. You know, the city of Sacramento had some, made some, did some cleanup. I think we saw some of that impact that happened in April, May. I think we saw the impact in May, June. So I think there's, I mean, there's got to be something that allows us to know when we're seeing spikes in, and also I asked for some, a communication with the county of Sacramento, the city of Sacramento, when things are happening, what is their plan to deal with the outcomes where they impact that out, the cities that are on the outskirts?
Yeah, we hit certainly, and, you know, I respect that, wanting to have, you know, data and metrics so we can tell, you know, if things are ebbing and flowing. We can't predict everything, obviously, but I would suggest a study session, you know, that, you know, and this is kind of what we mapped out, is a focus of have the police department report on their responses as best they can, that, you know, that they believe are related to issues with unhoused individuals. Maybe invite one of our community partners to give kind of an overview, where the county is really charged with human services, so perhaps having a county staff person, the head of what's called the HEART program, H-E-A-R-T, not to be confused with our local HEART nonprofit, maybe have them come speak to us, maybe even have our esteemed city attorney help with the boundaries of, you know, what, you know, what we can do, what we can't do, and then incorrect, and then as you mentioned, what can citizens do, all of this bolstered by as much data as we can pull. You know, some of it is a little loose, to be honest. It's hard to know the impacts in all ways, but we always want to bring you, you know, data as best we can, so I respect that.
Thanks for bringing up the HEART too, because we did talk about that, and they are starting, I believe, coming once a week to the library to help homeless navigate their way forward. They're working with the PD, I believe, at the library, right, before their meeting?
Been helped.
So just update on that, and thank you for reminding me.
And then also keeping in mind that we do have three nonprofits locally that are heavily engaged in getting people into services, managing some of their needs, Powerhouse, Jake's Journey Home, and Heart of Folsom are very heavily involved with PD, so, yeah, keeping them in mind too. All right, any other topics? All right. All right, next item is.
Actually, I have one.
Next item?
Could, yeah, this is a quick one. I have been wanting for some time for us to have a program of local art contests, and I think we have an opportunity to redress our garbage trucks as they become, you know, as they get rewrapped, or as they get wrapped for the first time, much in the way Southwest Airlines had a Shamu plane once upon a time. I think it would be pretty cool if you could go find one of our garbage collection vehicles that was special. So could we, could we have Parks or the Arts Council take a look at having an art contest, which is not guaranteed that somebody will end up on the side of a garbage truck? It has to be a winning design.
You always want that guarantee to be on the side of a garbage truck. That's what you aspire to.
It's got to be good, right? But if we could take a look at that, I think that would be something fun, and I was reminded of this because I saw a new vehicle that hadn't been wrapped yet heading down the road one day, and I was like, let's do the wrap project.
You know, one of the ideas I had, I was talking with my neighbors, we live right by the water treatment plant, and it was to have it decorated so it's much more prettier than the, you know, cream color, you know, round thing, but anyways, yeah.
Yeah, we can send that first through the Arts and Culture Commission.
Challenge the Arts Council to come up with something, yeah. Excuse me, the Arts and Culture Committee.
I like that idea, yeah. And I did briefly chat with the Public Works Director about this, and, you know, it's, the cost of a wrap is about the same, you know, no matter what the art is, so it's, it's like, you know, I don't think it would be a huge investment of dollars.
Yeah, and we have to replace them periodically anyway because they get used up, so. Thanks.
All right, will the clerk please call the next item?
Next item is city manager reports.
Thank you. The 10th Annual Hard to Believe Community Service Day takes place on Saturday, September 16th. This major citywide event mobilizes thousands of volunteers to complete dozens of service projects throughout Folsom. Community Service Day still needs more than 1,000 volunteers to complete projects throughout the city. Most of the projects don't require any special skills other than a willingness to pitch in where needed and a desire to make a positive and lasting impact in the community. Learn more and register at folsomcommunitieservice.org. A traffic safety improvement project at Folsom Lake Crossing and East Natomah Street is underway and nearly complete. You may have already noticed it, honestly, if you drive through that area. The project is designed to improve safety, reduce accidents and fatalities, and increase mobility. Median barrier rails have been installed on Folsom Lake Crossing between the Johnny Cash Bridge and Folsom Spillway Access Road, and on East Natomah between Folsom Lake Crossing and Geonado Way. Finishing work will continue, including minor concrete work and signage installation. The median barrier will be installed on Folsom Auburn Road between Pine Brook Drive and Folsom Dam Road later this week. And crews also previously completed the friction course overlay at East Natomah and Folsom Lake Crossing, and this is a special pavement treatment that improves surface drainage and tire traction. A pavement rehab project on Blue Ravine Road between Prairie City Road and East Fidwell is underway. Nighttime work will occur between 8:00 PM and 6:00 AM, beginning today, and is supposed to last six to 10 consecutive nights. So it is designed to improve, again, safety and also integrates ADA pedestrian upgrades, radar video vehicle detection, and upgraded weather reflective striping. The first phase of a four-month pipeline construction project is complete, and Phase Two is underway. Folsom Boulevard has been reduced to one lane in each direction from Blue Ravine to Glen Drive. So as early as tomorrow, work will begin at the intersection of Folsom Boulevard and Park Shore Drive. Free academic support is now available with the Folsom Public Library's online tutoring service called Help Now. Help Now offers 24/7 access to live tutors proficient in state curriculum and standards, and you can find out more at our library's website, folsom.ca.us/library. And our own preschool fund factory has a limited number of openings for three-year-olds, and so if you have a three-year-old or, and you'd like to have them enrolled in our preschool, please look at folsom.ca.us/preschool. And then I just wanted to share that I've had a senior executive management development program in place for a few months now to allow those interested among my department heads to serve as acting assistant city managers, because I don't have an assistant city manager, and it gives some, anyone interested a chance to be in that role. Marcus Yasutaki has been serving in that role and just wrapped up, and I just wanted to thank him. He was, he served admirably, did a terrific job, and the position has now rotated to Christine Brainard, our communications director, so she is now also your acting assistant city manager. So thank you to Marcus and thank you to Christine. That's all I have.
I don't have anything else except, yeah, thank you, Marcus, it was nice to see you at the Agenda Reviews and get to know you a little bit more, and Christine, you did a great job covering when Elaine was sick out with COVID, and I'm glad it was a quick recovery.
Thank you.
And that's it, thank you.
Okay. Councilmember Aquino.
I just wanted to make a comment. You know, we've had, I think, some difficult discussions recently, particularly about the city's finances, but as I was reading this agenda the last couple of days in preparation for this meeting, I really, you know what, we're doing some really good stuff. The redesign and the, you know, repavement and all that sort of stuff, Trader Lane parking lot, fantastic, that's much needed in the historic district. The purchase of two Tesla vehicles for the police department, you know, is fabulous, and I can't wait to hear how Chief Hillman's going to decide who gets to drive those. I don't know if they're going to Rochambeau or if it's based on seniority or what. But more importantly than even that, I just want the taxpayers to know that we are doing our best to efficiently and effectively spend their money, their hard-earned money. And two examples of that tonight were on our consent calendar. The first was shout out to Mark and his team, when Maguire and Hester was in the city doing work already on Folsom Lake Crossing and East Natomah, we had some kind of, you know, mini emergencies that needed to be taken care of, and so we were able to mobilize them to come do those projects while they were already in the city. And then a shout out to Marcus and his team with their project that they're doing, the sewer project along Folsom Boulevard, they have tried their best to coordinate with RT so that the projects could be done at the same time to save money on traffic control. It turns out that RT keeps delaying theirs, and we can't delay ours any farther, but it just, I think are two really good examples of how our staff is doing everything that they can to make sure that we spend the taxpayers' money wisely. So kudos to the city manager and all 490 employees of the city of Folsom. Thank you.
Thank you.
I just have one thing. It is cross-country season, middle schools will be out running soon, the high schools have already been running for a while, so please be careful if you see really skinny teenagers running along. They are doing a lot of hard work early in the morning to avoid the heat, so keep your eyes open as you're driving anywhere near the schools. Thank you.
I can't imagine running in this heat, but.
So I don't know if you guys, I, the council got to see me a little punchy earlier tonight. I was up at 5:30 this morning with the cross-country team at Vista, doing 800s on the track, so.
Very cool.
It's a long day.
The 800s?
What's that?
You were doing the 800s?
Oh, God, no, I was timing them, but I had to get out of bed at 5:00 AM to be there. Yeah, no, my time, my 800s are in the rearview mirror, but thank you.
All right, Vice Mayor Chalim Chala.
Yes, mine is going to be quick. National night out, you know, for our police, fire, cert, and caps, you know, huge thanks, you know, involving in the community on August 1st. Special thanks to Chief Hillman, you can pass the special thanks to Jessica Hess, you know, tons of work before, after, and all coordinations, and connecting with, what, 30 or 40 spots and making sure everything is in alignment and all those. The group I was with, and I was exchanging the ideas about the neighborhood watch with the residents, you know, talking about some C-click fix, but neighborhood watch, you know, how effective they are, or do you have a neighborhood watch? It's important, you know, we want the public to be ice and ears for our public safety. And my other one is, you know, joining a young man, Sudhir Karthikayan's Eagle Scouts Court of Honor event as well. You know, always love to see the kids and encourage them and empower them to be the great leaders of this country. And with that, thank you again, Folsom.
Thank you. For me, I have, so this morning, our city manager and a couple of city staff and myself met with PG&E, and this has been a sort of a contentious issue for the past several years when a couple of really long-term healthy oak trees were cut down, and so it sort of, sort of put a wedge between our relationship with PG&E and, I think, the city of Folsom and some residents. And so for the past three years, PG&E has had a government affairs individual that has come, and they, they've done such a good job of building the relationship, assuring us that those things are not going to be done going forward and that there's going to be really good communication. And so it was, it was a really good meeting, and I felt really assured that PG&E genuinely has an interest in ensuring that they communicate things that are important, that are, that have to be done, and that they will do appropriate communication. And then I also learned that, this is for all, like, you trivia nerds, that there are 270 miles of gas lines in Folsom and 27,000 homes that they service for homes and commercial. Community Service Day is coming up on September 16th, and I went to a meeting last Friday, sat for a short time there, and there is so much work that goes into that day that really big kudos to the, to Justin Raythall, who's the chair, and the whole organizing committee, who really are doing a tremendous job to ensure that thousands of people get into a project. Choose Folsom is hosting Meet the Leaders next, this coming Thursday, actually, with the focus on healthcare, and as Folsom continues to grow, we will become a healthcare hub, so it'll be a lot of good information. And then I was really touched by the woman who came and spoke about the Ronald McDonald House and what they do, and that event, I hope it is supported because that, the Ronald McDonald's home does so much good for families that are in need. And then lastly, YK and I, so, you know, a lot of complaints come up our way, and sometimes I'm one of those that, with the, sort of like, with this lean methodology background that, I like to go to Gamba. And Gamba is, if you tell me that there's a problem, I want to go check it out myself. So YK, Vice Mayor Chalim Chala and I, you know, there was a list of issues that people have sent up, and I said, let's just go, let's just go check it out. So we did, two weekends ago, from 10:00 PM to 12:00 AM, we drove around what were, what I would consider hotspots, things, complaints that people have had. And I, we both walked away incredibly impressed with just how clean the city was, and we went to every park that people had a complaint about, and there wasn't anything that we saw that was very alarming, of all the places that we went to, and we went to several places. It was actually really quiet. We saw one camp, which I know that these camps are in more hidden places, but it was, it was a really good, it was a really good time for us to go out, and I really encourage, if anybody has issues that they want us to go check out, you know, I will always go to Gamba and check out what it is that people have, and, you know, getting solutions to problem is really the fun part of problems, and, you know, people had escalated the issues happening at Walmart. And I sent a text to a woman who was a local manager for Walmart, who is now a national executive, and literally from the time I placed a text or a call to her, within, with 36 hours, Walmart parking lot was cleaned, they had gone in, they had gone in and made the removals that needed to be done, and it was just impressive how just really good communication with key people really is, can keep our city clean and, and just moving forward. And with that, I will close the meeting at 7:00.
I'll make one comment in addition to, I know we were driving on the parking lot, we see few questionable kids, but the big part, on the sand volleyball court, we have seen 30 to 35 young kids enjoying playing. I just want to, you know, call out that, you know, yes, our kids are at the right place, most of the kids.
Yeah, they're good kids, really good kids. All right, with that, we will close at 8:00 PM.